The idea isn't tether, it's the actual restriction.
Next one, 101, we didn't go in the bubble, the next one, the whole thing. We could get married.
Good.
That's what has happened to us.
Why not?
Yeah, well, it's led me to.
Well, true you.
One dog that bought this.
So happy to see that.
Seven or eight foot chair, hot water.
Good.
As food, but it's not fresh.
I'm so glad to hear.
I know you know about that. Just because I see. Because I see all that stuff you got in your backyard, if that is not example of granddaddy's love for him.
But your next best steed is when they all leave.
Well, yeah.
We would just call them back and jack it down.
Well, you know, every time I run out of here, you know, I'm saying, yeah, I love my car. But that is.
Okay, thank you.
I love.
You didn't point it at me.
Eighty-nine, eighty-five.
He crossed the street there and they moved. I tell you Eddie Cruz lived in the house.
Oh, right.
And he sold that house.
But anyway, then there's the other, then there's the other spectrum in the freezing morning, in the freezing when it's twenty degrees.
He sold. Miracle and.
And that stuck out. And they got a double shift. Not warm. What about they?
I had seen.
See, I'm. You know, I mean.
Did you see my text?
You know, our youngest is twenty.
Did you see my text? Pat?
No, no, no.
Oh, okay.
Because animals can't ask them, so. Children, to an extent, children can.
We got that.
Okay.
So, I've got five-thirty. So, we are ready to roll. Good afternoon, everyone. It is nice to see you tonight, and I hope you all had a wonderful Fourth of July, Independence Day holiday weekend. Uh, we are assembled here for the City of Oxford Board of Commissioners' agenda meeting. Today is Tuesday, July sixth, two thousand and twenty-one, and it is five-thirty P.M., and we are assembled here in the committees, the Commissioners' Boardroom at City Hall. Anybody that's got phones or electronic devices, please turn them off or mute them. And, uh, we are assembled, uh, we are, the business of the day is to set the agenda for next Tuesday's regular board meeting, which is July thirteenth, two thousand and twenty-one. But I believe we also would have a request to add.
Yes, I would like to add, um, closed session at the end of the meeting for personnel reasons.
Okay, this is not a problem, it's just a time for the annual review of the city manager. At the end of this meeting, yes, and.
I would like to, uh, Madam Mayor, add an item for the agenda for the next week's meeting, if you can.
We, so we can, after we review the agenda, how that if we, we can have a full discussion about that. Is that okay? I think that's generally, yeah.
Thank you.
But this is just for tonight, so Commissioner Fields has requested that we go into closed session tonight to do a preliminary review of the, um, city manager's annual appraisal. What's the, so, any discussion on that? No? All in favor of adding that to the tonight's agenda? Signal somebody saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Like sign? Okay, we will add closed session at the end of the meeting tonight. And, uh, with that, we'll move forward to, uh, set the regular agenda. And, um, we will make sure, Commissioner Toby, that we discuss your item, okay? Absolutely, so standard openings in the beginning, and we have the July Yard of the Month and a presentation by former Commissioner Al Woodliffe on the Airport Authority, any questions about that? Okay, uh, we go forward to a public hearing. We will hold a public hearing to receive citizen input regarding a wastewater allocation agreement for Hatcher Creek per North Carolina General Statute one sixty D dash six oh one, paragraph A. A legislative hearing must be held before adopting, amending, or repealing any ordinance or development regulation. And then, following up, so, any questions about the public hearing next week? Okay, we're moving forward, uh, item B under that, to consider adopting the proposed wastewater allocation agreement for Hatcher Creek. So, the developer proposes to develop on the property a mixed-use planned unit development of residential and commercial use to be named Hatcher Creek. The proposed plan for Hatcher Creek includes the following sections and uses. The Groves, which will consist of two hundred and eighty-eight apartment units. The Towns, which will consist of one hundred and eight townhome units. The Village, thirty single-family units. And the Landing, which is reserved for future commercial use. And the developer desires to secure, and the city desires to provide sewer allocation for the development of Hatcher Creek pursuant to the terms of this agreement, which is in attachment four B. Does anybody have any questions on this item at this time? Okay, thank you. Then we move forward to item five, city business. Consider accepting Attorney General Gerald Coines of Hicks and Wren P L L C for legal representation for the Oxford Zoning Board of Adjustment, because the attorney, Willie Darby, resigned from this position due to scheduling conflicts on June eighth of two thousand and twenty-one. Do you all have, he's currently serving, serving on the zoning board of adjustment for the town of Butner in Granville County. And you see, he will receive a flat rate of two hundred per month for the following services. Meeting prep, attending the meetings, and post-meeting items needed, such as drafting orders. Services not included in the above flat rate will be billed at a hundred and seventy per hour. These services include, but are not limited to, reviewing and updating the rules of procedure, advising as to other changes that may be needed to comply with chapter one sixty D of the North Carolina General Statutes, and services rendered for litigation, including any appeals of decisions of the Board of Adjustment. Are there any questions on this item at this time?
I would like to move that to consent agenda, please.
What does the rest of the board think?
I didn't quite hear.
I'd like to move it to consent agenda, move that to the consent agenda. Because it's not a, you know, an item of, was controversial nature, it's just a formality. I mean, I'm, I'm not opposed to it.
What, what would the, what's the consensus of the group?
Just, we can go.
I'm sorry about, we can read, we can read it for two hours, go ahead.
Okay, we gotta leave, leave it where it is?
Yeah, go ahead, leave it where it is, we'll read, we'll read it three times.
Okay.
Go ahead.
Item B, consider adopting a budget amendment for the joint resurfacing project between the City of Oxford and N C D O T. The city entered into an agreement with N C D O T to do a joint resurfacing project, and they required payment of our portion of the project in advance. The city is using the Powell Bill funds to cover a portion of the payment and paid the loan to cover the additional amount needed. The proposed budget amendment would be proceeds from the B B and T loan into the Powell Bill slash street resurfacing. The payment to N C D O T was based on the D O T's engineers estimate for the project. It is possible this amount could change when the actual resurfacing is completed. Any questions on this item at this time?
I do.
Yes, sir.
Uh, by the proceeds from the loan, only two hundred fifty thousand, I thought it was one point two five million.
It is, um, Mr. Un, please assist me with this. It's essentially an accounting move for our books to be clean at the end of the fiscal year of two thousand and twenty-one that we just ended. Uh, the amount of the streets, uh, the amount of the loan, uh, still remains the same. It's an accounting move in advance of auditing for fiscal year two thousand and twenty-one, is what it is. Nothing has changed. The amount that we are borrowing from B B and T remains the same.
Okay. So, have we already borrowed it?
Have we already borrowed it? We do, yes, we have.
The board approved the loan, closed for one point two million, and this is just to, uh, lucky dredge to meet the amount that we're borrowing. And so, the point that initially established at one million, but it needed to be, the two hundred fifty thousand dollars extra need to be added, made another. They've already been struggling to deliver it from there.
I thought it was discussed a while back, we had to pay D O T the full amount a while back.
We have not paid them.
We have not paid them, when will we pay? I thought, I thought we had to do it before they agreed to the contract.
They have yet to request it, so we have not paid them yet.
We're not rushing.
No, we are not rushing at this point in time, Amy, they know better when that is, but they have awarded that contract. It's been awarded to Wooton.
We, we have paid them.
I thought we had.
Yes, we have.
Have we? Okay.
Because I thought it was agreement, they wouldn't, they wouldn't agree to the contract, don't think. And they have till November of two thousand and twenty-two to do the work, right?
Correct.
So, they got our money for the next year and a half.
Correct.
That's to complete the work?
We have a reconstruction meeting this month, and we'll get a schedule from their contractor some room. That will give us a better idea of when they will be doing the work in Oxford.
Okay.
And we'll relay that to the board once we have it.
Wait, wasn't there, oh, yes, Commissioner Toby, go on.
Is, is that November twenty-two, two thousand and twenty-two, to complete the work?
Correct, that, but that doesn't mean they have to take the entire time.
No, obviously, no, but.
You know, if it's slow as it is on Roundabout, it'll take them.
Oh, yeah. I know, but, I'm, I'm like you, I'm concerned that they got the money, and they've got another year and a half maybe to keep that money.
There is a clause, Mr. Thornton, can you remind, do you happen to recall? I know there's some wording in the contract that we signed with N C D O T that assures some level of satisfaction with the work done for our work, since they are getting paid upfront, can you remind the board?
Verbatim, but, uh, we did request that language, and they included it in the agreement, that it would, you know, be mutually satisfactory as far as the performance of, of that contract. Like Amy said, it does not prohibit them from beginning sooner. We'll find out when we have that meeting and have some conversation with them about where that might be in the pipeline. And just for the record, the Roundabout is a different contractor than the resurfacing contractor. It is still the same parent organization over both of them, but, um, yes, we're, we're hopeful that, uh, it will be a little bit sooner, but not before we actually can complete some of the remaining utility projects that are in some of those targeted roads that are going to be resurfaced.
So, if there's no, I don't know why I thought there was going to be some kind of partial payment, but it's not that. They've got the full one point two million.
They stuck to their guns on that.
Okay, well, we've saved the residents and taxpayers of Oxford a lot of money doing it this way, so, even though it might appear suspect.
If rates were higher, we might be a little bit more upset about it, you've been sitting on it rather than us.
So, does this mean this check is clear?
Thank you, yes.
Does this mean the check is cleared?
The, the checks did written and it's cleared. And they will do the work, it allows us to know what's happening, what's needed.
Excellent, thank you very much. Any further questions on this item? Okay, going forward, item C, consider approving the installation of temporary public art in downtown Oxford. The D O E D C Design Committee and the Public Art Committee request the approval of the temporary public art installation twelve months in downtown Oxford. The D O E D C and the City of Oxford, as recommended in the downtown master plan adopted in two thousand and sixteen, have researched and reviewed various options for public art and used in other communities, and recommends temporary rented art as the best solution at this time. So, use, the purpose is to use the temporary art installation as a catalyst for discussion with the community regarding the designs and art types for Oxford to consider for permanent installation in the future. The goal is that the public art community, committee would like to create an art walk with the pre-selected and proposed site locations. The art walk would be promoted as a destination to visit the sculpted art in Oxford. Each piece of sculpted art will cost one thousand to fifteen hundred dollars per piece for the twelve, twelve-month rental to come from the downtown development budget economic development line item. Commitment, the City of Oxford will enter into a rental lease agreement with one artist, Adam Walls. Based on public works director Stephen Blasko's experience with this artist, the committee requests a minimum of five pieces to create this art walk in downtown Oxford. The city will provide labor and supplies needed for the installation of the art pieces. So, you do have, uh, examples of the art in, uh, attachment five C, and, uh, there are locations that have been identified, and, um, so, you have some strong, I, I guess, there, so we have, uh, wish two highlighted items, number three and number seven, that say wish, uh, meaning that these are options should one of the selected pieces not fit once a site inspection is completed. Um, but it shows the pieces identified and the locations where they could be put. And, uh, does anybody have any questions on this item at this time?
Several.
Yes, sir.
Five pieces minimum, that's the first, and I just want to be correct. So, anywhere from five, a thousand dollars, so that's five thousand dollars, maybe.
Yes.
Up to how many?
Five would be the maximum.
Five would be the maximum.
Five is what is recommended for a art walk.
So, the budget will come, I mean, this will come from your budget or the city's budget or?
The city's budget, from the economic development line.
So, it's my.
Right, that's, it's, somebody comes from the downtown businesses, is that, am I wrong or?
No, it comes from the city's downtown development department. As a line item, which it reads, in the line item, it reads economic development.
So, the money has been, is already allocated in that line item in the current year's budget, am I correct?
But what, what, I mean, I understand it's in the budget, but what I'm getting at is the money from the business, downtown businesses, because it was, you know, a portion of the downtown director's salary is come from the downtown business. So, that's, that's what I'm saying, are the, are the businesses paying for this as well, or is it just the city?
No, it's just the city.
Okay.
Because it is a destination of people coming to the city to view that, to the social security department. It was supported by the local artists, um, the, uh, public art group that is the Oxford Art Studio, I think is the name, and then several of our, um, stakeholders downtown and representatives from the D O E D C Design Committee.
Okay. So, do, do we need to have any particular permits for, for the places you have chosen for it to go? Like from the D O T or something like that?
No, sir, because they're all going to be on property that the city owns for, at the library and the courtyard between the courthouse. And we have a representative speaking with the, uh, county commissioners tonight to see, to get a measure of their temperature for adding art to their locations, to property that they own.
Okay. To be clear, I'm not opposed to it, I'm just, just questioning, you know.
Questions are good.
I have one other question.
Yes, ma'am.
So, how many total pieces are we talking over the course of a year, twelve or?
Total of five.
Just five? From that one artist?
From one artist, yes. We selected the one artist because of the nature of the art that he had. Um, Stephen has had experience with this particular artist in Clayton, his previous, um, community. And these pieces are available, and it will be easier for us to get them on the ground if we have one artist. But the goal in the future is to look for local artists or artists in the area. But this is to just get us started and get this conversation started about what art could be, public arts specifically, could be in Oxford, and what we would like for it to be in the future.
I, I am concerned, what do we really mean by fifteen, a thousand to fifteen thousand, fifteen hundred dollars per piece for the twelve-month rental?
So, the contracts are written, they're leased for twelve months, and some pieces, depending on their height and width, are fifteen hundred dollars as opposed to a thousand dollars. And we've given you some of those examples, like the creepy crawly, if you look at it, it's an interactive piece of art, and it's enlarged. And so, we anticipate that it could be about fifteen hundred dollars, and it's that one piece for the twelve-month period.
Okay, so each piece will stay here for twelve months?
Yes, ma'am.
Of the five pieces?
Yes.
Okay, I'm following. And then the goal would be, as I understand it, that in the meantime, the city can be working on developing guidelines. Um, many of the board members were here when we had interim manager Mike McLaurin, and he was in Waxhaugh, and he shared, then, I remember having a conversation with him, that they had developed guidelines for the City of Waxhaugh on how to deal with public art. So, that enables us to set up a system so that when we want to broaden beyond this initial installation, we've got that year to figure out the details, so that sometime before the lease period is up, we've got new standards and can do a call for art and have a way to figure out how to choose pieces.
Will people be allowed to, to pose on some of this, this art, take pictures and that type of stuff?
Some of it is interactive, and some of it will be, you will be able to do that.
Okay.
Um, as you know, the, the May has a seat, so you can sit on it. The creepy crawly has, um, places where you can walk through and take a picture through it. Others that are more stationary, like the birds, the free, the birds flying out in the hay, you can take a picture maybe near that, but not necessarily on it.
Exactly, okay.
Great, further questions by anybody? Okay, uh, wonderful. Then, uh, we go forward, and now, I think, and we have the consent agenda, um, pretty straightforward at this time. Uh, so I don't forget, before we go to Commissioner Toby's item, um, on the dates to remember, the bike rodeo, which was scheduled for next week, has been canceled, am I correct about that, Ms. Bone?
Yes.
Okay, any other changes to anything like this on the, on this right now?
Not right now.
Okay, well, then, excellent, Commissioner Toby, tell us about your item.
Great, well, I've been, um, approached by a few concerned citizens about, um, I suppose you could call it overall animal abuse, um, dogs being tethered up in yards, twenty-four hours a day, seven days a week, fifty-two weeks a year. Um, I actually, when I looked at one particular animal, an older dog, it had a doghouse, which was falling apart. It was on a chain. The food that it was given was, it, I can't say, but it looked to me a week old. The water bowl, um, had flies in it, had dirt in it, and things like that, but according to, uh, Granville Animal Shelter, that is adequate. Yes, surprise, there's nothing they could do about it. So, I propose, um, this, um, ordinance about tethering dogs. There are several municipalities within the area. Uh, there are twenty-seven states in the United States that are bringing these anti, or non-tethering ordinances into play. The states, if the states that don't do it, it's the counties within states that do it, and municipalities within those counties that do it, and I've got a few examples if you want them. I want to put this ordinance, um, on the books, I want to discuss it and put it on the agenda for next week. I think it's very, very important, especially the weather we've been having recently. If you could see a dog tied up outside for eighty, in eighty-five degrees or higher, with very little shade, bad water, bad food, for twenty-four hours a day, seven days a week, it is just not right. And I want to see it stopped. And I think this city can go a long way into educating people about it. So, that's what I propose to put onto the agenda for open discussion next week.
Any, any questions or comments at this time for Commissioner Toby?
You propose?
Okay, I was just going to say, I certainly support, uh, this effort. Um, a- as you recall, Attorney Batten came and spoke with us about this issue, and, um, I think she, um, had someone to come to her and complain about a dog who was, you know, in pretty bad shape as a result of this kind of mistreatment, so, um, I think this is a good thing. Um, I know one thing, a lot of my neighbors are always walking dogs and, you know, uh, doing some positive things with animals, and of course, we have the dog park and other places for the dogs to, um, exercise. Um, you know, I can only imagine what a dog suffers, just being tied to a tree or, or pole for hours and hours. Um, it's got to be a terrible situation, so I do support that.
Excellent, Mr. Curran, did I hear you comment?
So, are you proposing to put this on the agenda for us to accept this?
To accept that, yes, I am, yes.
Are we in a position to do that?
It'd be a good idea to refer it to legal, um, and get his comments on it next Tuesday, I'll certainly do that first thing in the morning. I'll, I'll apologize for Tom not being here this evening, he did contact me earlier today and said that he was feeling crappy and having blood work done, and didn't need to come, and I told him, since you're sitting next to me, no.
When, when I, when I wrote this, I just took it from different other municipalities, their wording, exactly.
Yep, I, I'm not, I'm sure that a number of municipalities and counties have, you know, tethering laws. The difficulty here in Oxford is who does the enforcement. We do need to get that on board, because I think it's going to be difficult to anoint someone with the City of Oxford to actually enforce.
If we don't have animal control anymore, it would almost require us to start back animal control.
That, that was going to be my, um, question was, you know, which jurisdiction would it fall under? Who, you know, who would it fall under for policing? Would it be the police department, or, you know, what entity would be the watchdog for the watchdog?
Would, would it be, I mean, I know, and I would love to hear from Ms. Hart, what, once upon a time, before we had the marvelous Antoine Rice, who took a lot of work off of her shoulders. The way code enforcement was done was basically on a complete basis. Um, and so, there, you know, my question regarding this would be, is that a way that we could start it, as you're not on the prowl, um, when you don't have the capacity, you don't have the capacity, but if somebody complains, as was the case that you heard about, Commissioner, uh, about an animal that's being, you know, mercilessly tethered, unendingly would probably be the best term, um, then, whether it would be code enforcement or the police that verify and notify the owner, but, you, you know, I guess, I mean, is that?
I think that's, that's part of the clarification that is necessary. Um, my looking at it is that you would, if you approve this, you're adding this to your existing code of ordinances. So, the enforcement of your code of ordinances is similar to, you know, junk motor vehicle, or spitting on the sidewalk, or anything else that's in your code of ordinance that is a violation thereof. Uh, it becomes, comes down to how do you enforce that? And this is a little bit of a specialty item almost in determining. And this is a little bit of a specialty item almost in determining whether that particular situation is in violation. It takes probably some specific training in regards to that. I think it would be good to make sure that the city attorney is aware of this and what we are doing and is prepared to speak on it next Tuesday.
Okay.
And I don't want to sound like I'm not in favor of it, but I think there's some questions that need to be answered, and I don't, I talked to Ms. Hart last week, something entirely separate from this. I don't know that we need this. I think, Antoine has a tough job telling somebody to move a junk car. If you go tell him, you got to do something with your dog, it's a little different.
It is.
I mean, this need almost goes to the police department, not to, not to Antoine.
That was my reasoning for asking, who's going to be the enforcer here, because of the barrier that Antoine hits with trying to get property within our guidelines, I can imagine what he would hit trying to tell somebody that their rottweiler is in violation. I mean, it would, so who would, who would take on that, that responsibility? It would almost have to be somebody that's trained in that.
It would be, and at times, if it is the code enforcement officer, I'm sure he would have to have police escort to enforce some of these situations, those types of things. So, it is something that does merit a little bit of more review. I do not disagree that, you know, it is certainly a message that we need to send to folks that have dogs, that if you have a dog, you know, please treat them well as they should be, and that we do have concern in the way that they are being treated, but I do feel strongly that we really do need to get our house in order in regards to the enforcement of that and how we're going to do that, since, you know, the animal control officer is not under our bureaucratic umbrella.
Is there, I have two questions. One of them is if we can hear from Ms. Hart, and also any merit in your having a conversation with the county manager?
I think that there is. I think that there is, and he and I have had an initial conversation after the lady was, I can't remember her name, was here previously. Mike and I did have a conversation about that, and trying to remember the end of the conversation was something he would, he would be talking more to animal control about it, but it needs to be revisited.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Hart, do you have any comments?
I agree with everything that he's going to say with his verbal conversation with the county manager, and he's someone trained for it, and no disrespect to our code enforcement officers, but I don't think it's possible.
Okay, and I wasn't trying to imply that I was trying to add to his burden, but he, he is wonderful. Yes, sir.
The only thing I want to add is that there is some enforcement already being done. I have clients who have been charged by the, you know, animal shelter over there by the sheriff's department, and in some cases, some pretty bad situations where dogs, you know, have chains around their necks, particularly rottweilers and other kinds of dog, where it literally tears into the flesh. So, so, so there is being some enforcement done, I know that, by the animal shelter here. Now, I, I just think it would be good to have a number of agencies focusing on this issue so that we can, you know, just cover it in every, in all kinds of directions. So, so I've got clients who are charged with abuse of animals.
So, this would just clarify that within the city of Oxford, animal, animal control might be called.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, people are being charged.
I just think something has to be done. I mean, it's just not fair. Animals cannot speak for themselves. It's up to us to speak for them, the same as children, you know? They can't speak for themselves, so someone must, and I'm the one at the moment.
Thank you.
And we can't address this with like a PSA or newsletter or, or some other way, because otherwise, you're going to have to identify someone to do this level of enforcement and then have a certain degree of accountability, and then they have to have a certain response time to protect this animal. And if we don't have all of those things in place, what was the point from Jump Street if it still takes us ten days to respond to it, or, or let's just say five days? Five days is a long time.
It is.
To, to, so, there's a lot to, to think about here. I mean, we don't want to box ourselves into a new position.
There is, I mean, we'd certainly be glad to do that as far as getting that information out through every outlet that we have available to us.
Yeah.
But I agree with you that there are, there are layers to this.
Yes, it is.
The difference in what Commissioner Bridges is describing is, you know, direct animal abuse.
Yeah.
There is some subjectivity to this. Been through something similar in another county, and we had a similar issue where it was reported, you know, there's a dog that's chained to a tree, neighbors are taking pictures, doing the same thing. Animal enforcement basically goes out there and determines that, you know, there's, there's water there, they're feeding them.
They take them off the leash.
It meets the, the code requirements, you know, as far as it not being animal cruelty.
Playing the game.
So, it's all in that subjectivity of the determination of is it somebody in violation of an animal law or cruelty law? So, that's where you get into some of the, where it needs to be the proper person doing the enforcement, because there is some subjectivity to it in making those determinations.
Commissioner Toby, you said you pulled this information, I think you said, the city of Raleigh, any?
Raleigh, there's Hendersonville, it comes under the animal abuse section, there's Hendersonville, Porsud County, North Carolina, I mean.
Could you share the names of the cities with Ms. Hart and Ms. Thornton, because?
If you will send those to me, then the city attorney would have someone potentially to speak with, including their city attorney.
And that's exactly it, to find out from those jurisdictions, okay, when you instituted this, what was the fallout? How did you handle it? What did you find out? And that way, we'll be better, instead of just supposing, Bella could do this or that, we might have a little bit more firsthand information about, this is what we realized, this is, you know, if we could have done it over, we would have had this in place or whatever.
Okay, I was, I was.
Can I just ask a little question?
Yes.
If animals are not tethered, what, what does that mean for safety of people who may be walking by, or are the animals contained in some way, or are they?
We still have a leash law.
Okay.
So, it's just, it's, the leash law doesn't go away, there's still a requirement to maintain control of your animal, that this just says that maintaining control of your animal doesn't mean keeping them on a chain or tied up for twenty-four seven.
I just remember when all animals ran free in the city, and that's what I'm envisioning, so I wanted to ask.
No, yep. Thank you. Any further questions at this time for Commissioner Toby? Or the manager, or Ms. Hart? Okay, so, you'll pass that, that information into the manager, and he will get in touch and?
Yes, ma'am.
And the goal is to have it on the agenda, unless I would say that we discovered there's a lot more information that needs to be addressed, in which case, the manager will get in touch with you. Is that?
I believe that it would be fair to add it to the agenda as a discussion as to where we are and what the city attorney has found.
Okay, excellent.
In his research, so, in some way, shape, or form, we'll revisit this next Tuesday night.
Thank you.
Excellent, thank you very much. Okay, back to Commissioner Gilry, is there anything else that you would like to bring up?
Oh, one thing I want to have follow up with is Elwood Cemetery, to find out where we are and what has been found, or, and if we've had a finding, what will be the resolution, and who will do it, or whatever the case may be.
I have a scheduled call with Fries and Nichols tomorrow to discuss that very subject, where they are, and intend to present their findings to the city of Oxford.
When do they plan to present their findings?
I'll have that conversation with them tomorrow, then on that.
Okay.
But they have sixty days, I believe, to complete that in the agreement that the board authorized.
Excellent. You're good for now, Commissioner Toby? Okay? I'm just writing myself a note here. Commissioner Bridges, anything you would like to bring up?
Um, yeah. I don't know exactly, exactly how many years I've been on the board, but I think it's somewhere in the range of thirteen, fourteen years total, you know what I mean, total. Because, you know, I was on the board for a little while, went off for a little while when I presided as judge, and then I came back onto the board. So, I don't know, I've been on this board fourteen, close to that number of years. And during that period of time, I think that I probably have said a lot of things. And, and I've certainly disagreed with some of my colleagues during that process, you know, those that are presently on the board and some that have gone on and decided that they wanted to truly enjoy their retirement, because they felt like they've served enough time. But out of the years that I've been on this board, and maybe, I don't know, Madam Secretary, you might be able to give me an exact number one day, but I know I've been on here some time. And something happened to me, you know, a meeting or so ago, where while we were taking a break, I was approached from someone at the, in the audience, and literally screamed at and called a liar. Now, let me say this, I'm not thin-skinned, I am not, but I have seen other commissioners attacked on this board, for, you know, in personal ways and in other ways. And at our last meeting, it's interesting, the folks who were very respectful, who had opinions about what was going on, on this board and, and things like that, and folks who were disrespectful. And I feel like we as commissioners, all of us, should be afforded a certain amount of respect while we are in this chamber and sitting behind this desk here. You know, I don't, I don't agree with everything some of my colleagues feel and think, but you will never hear me walk up to a colleague and call them names and be disrespectful to them. I will say I respectfully disagree. And I do not have a problem with whoever is out there coming to me and saying, well, I disagree with you, Commissioner Bridges, on what you said. And I, I just feel differently about that. But I'd be darned if I'm going to sit here and have somebody approach me and call me names, scream it to me, while I am on break of a meeting of this board. And so, I think something, you know, we put things in place about when people stand up at that podium, how much time they can talk, and how they should carry themselves when they're up there speaking. And I think that we need something in place for, for our meetings so that no commissioner, no matter who they are, can be approached from someone in this audience and disrespected. And I had some citizens who were standing there talking to me, expressing something about the meeting, and they were appalled at the way that I was spoken to and, and treated. And so, we need to have some kind of rule in place that folks that do something like that to any of us should receive a warning, and then if they persist in doing things like that, they should be barred from our meetings. Because, you know, in my whole life, and all the years I've been on that board, I have never been spoken to like I was spoken to on that day. People have many times told me they disagree with me, and I, and I don't have a problem with that, but I'd be darned if I'm going to let that happen again. And I think that we ought to have some rules in place so that we don't have to individually deal with that. We shouldn't have to deal with that. Mayor, if you, if somebody don't like something you said, or don't like what you're wearing or something like, you know, they need to keep it to themselves when we're having a meeting. And I'm just not going to tolerate, I don't know if some folks feel like they're privileged, you know, that they can do stuff like that in public? I don't know. Maybe they feel like they're privileged, but I'm not going to tolerate that. And all I ask is that if you've got a problem with me, you disagree with something I said, you come up and say that, but you need to do it in a respectful way. And if they're not doing it in a respectful way, we ought to take action on this board to not allow it to happen. I've seen it happen to other commissioners, right out in public, and it's, it's time we put a stop to it. And I promise you, I'm not thin-skinned. That's all I want to say.
Is that the kind of thing that this board has the ability to do, Mr. Manager?
It is certainly something that this board has the ability to discuss amongst itself as far as objectives that you have for interacting with the public and what's appropriate and what's inappropriate. I certainly think that that is certainly within, you know, the realm of your authority to determine that and how the proceedings take place. I'll leave it at that for now. I think it warrants us a larger discussion and conversation by this board as to really how the rest of the board feels in regards to that interaction or interactions that have occurred in the past and how you would like to potentially prevent them from taking place in the future.
Thank you. Okay, thank you, Commissioner Bridges.
So, a code of ethics that we recite every meeting doesn't cover this?
Covers us.
It covers us.
Well, no, it says equal treatment to everyone with dignity, courtesy, and respect.
Say that one more time. And, and if we're going to keep talking about this, I'm going to be honest, I'm going to have to step out, because feelings are, feelings are starting to come back, and I, it took me a long time to get over that, and I'm not, you know, I can't, I can't handle it. So, if we're going to keep talking about it, I got to go, and I'll come back. But, you know, at least, Commissioner Bridges, the meeting was adjourned, and it wasn't on video, and it wasn't recorded what was said about you, and it wasn't opinion, it was more, it was an opinion and not a lie. Now, if we're going to keep talking about honesty, I'm going to go outside, because I don't want to say some things that I mean.
The core values, we could certainly conceivably use this as a basis for what the manager was talking about. So, we can ponder it and seek counsel and insight. And there we go. Okay, Commissioner Kern?
Uh, yeah.
Let the record note that Mayor Proten left. Let the record note that Mayor Proten left. Yes, sir.
I'd like to thank Mary Young for her job with the EDC so far. She is, this will be your last meeting, right? Thanks a lot for what you've done, a lot for downtown, I appreciate every bit, I really do. Second, um, remember Ed Taylor's family. Well, none...
Ed was Taylor.
Taylor's Grill.
Yeah. Some of you haven't been around Oxford long, and the manager's one. Taylor's Grill, Ed always got thankful, the grill, I'd love to swing, cook a hot dog. He'd sit over in the corner, play the guitar, sing, his wife served all the food. But, uh, will be missed around here.
Yes, he will. I like that man.
Food, you gotta say, but Ed didn't cook. He, he sang, he didn't cook.
He'd serenade you.
He was special.
And have a great conversation with him. A great conversation.
That's all. Thank you, Mary.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Since Mayor Proten's gone...
Yeah, can I make a quick comment? I will be representing the board at Mr. Taylor's funeral on Friday.
Great.
Is this Friday?
Yes, they, they asked me to come. So I will...
Teresa's got a question.
No, 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 I was just saying, good job. I mean, going to the funeral.
Yeah, so, well, I'll be there and we'll make the comments on behalf of the city. So, yes, dearly loved.
Piggybacking on Commissioner Kern.
Yes, sir.
My maiden name is Taylor. I grew up on Goshen Street and Ed grew up on Goshen Street, and all through the years we never found the biological connections to cousins, so we just made it up. Um, Ed was, he, he's gonna really be missed because he was divorced a family because Emma would say he couldn't cook or talk, and that's why she didn't let him in the kitchen. Um, and he is brother to one of our former police officers, Officer Donnie O'Taylor, is his older brother. So he's gonna be missed in the community, walking every morning with that black leather jacket on, that black leather vest, huh? How, how hot it was, he had that black leather vest on.
Red shirt.
And red shirt. Um, my question is to our manager, how are we, how, how are we coming with our merit system and we're working?
We continue to work on it, gather more information from other sources to help us when we come back and have that conversation with personnel community about what we would like to do.
That's it. And, and to Mary, thank you, girl, for Thursday nights. That's, that's phenomenal, not only Thursday night, but for all the effort you put into making Oxford shine. Thank you. We're gonna miss you, and I know you're gonna miss us. Back to you next.
Yes, sir. Mayor Proten.
Oh, I just would like to read the definition of a consent agenda. Is what is a consent agenda? A consent agenda is groups, the routine procedural information, and self-explanatory non-controversial items typically found in an agenda. So I wasn't trying to take away anything from anyone, just to be clear, that used to be printed on our agenda, I don't know what happened. Maybe those, um, code of ethics and core values and mission statement replaced that, but, um, that's it. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much.
Oh, when is that band coming to, I like?
Twenty-third.
Twenty-third.
All right.
It's Friday night.
Well, that's the, that's the...
Me, too.
I got it on the phone.
That's the music on main.
Yeah, I like that.
It's retro, we hear eight thirteen.
Eight thirteen is retro band?
He just does that.
Okay, they're the folks that have played at our Boys and Girls Club bash, so they'll get this. I, I'm not sure I've heard the band that he likes, but I, I know the retro band will be up and dancing. Carolina, what is...
Carolina Soul.
Carolina Soul, okay, excellent.
They asked me to sing one from last year. They did, they really did. I was like, they try. You have to laugh.
Be, be ready, it might happen again.
One is the Chambers.
Yeah. And then the beach one, I like the beach one.
Good. Commissioner Proten?
I just ask, are both of these, uh, music on the main, or is it a live after five kind of thing, or...
Um, music on main, it has the same kind of flavor, if you will, a live after five.
But the two that you've mentioned are music on the main?
Yes, sir, they are. And a live after five is happening on one of the Thursday nights. Listen, just reminded me, six point, or eight twenty-six, I think is their date. Yes, that's right.
I think they've still got two scheduled, but one's in like October.
One is here, and then one is in the Butter Creek more area, so...
And I would simply add my thanks to you for what all you've done, so that's all I have.
Yeah, I'm gonna say, wow, Mary, time flew by. And I agree with everything that's been said. Commissioner Kern, you said you've done an awful lot for downtown, and you have, and everybody, whether they know it's because of your work or not, appreciates that, people throughout the community, and I want to say a big hurrah for this last effort with the art, and a shout out to our new public works director, Stephen Blasko, who just brought a wealth of information, and we appreciate that so, and, and so much, and Mary was just like, yeah, let's, you guys worked so well together, and it's just really awesome, so we're gonna work at being very happy for you, sort of pastors, but we will miss you a lot, very much. City manager, anything else that you would like to add?
No, I've already told Mary how much I hate her, that she's leaving, so, uh, she knows that, and, uh, she knows how much we're gonna miss her. Mary, um, when I hired her three and a half years ago, you know, I had a lot of challenges for her, and she's met every one of them. One of them was to, um, you know, just keep some activities going in downtown and create that sense of destination in Oxford, and, um, she's achieved that, and I hope to be as successful in naming her successor as I was in hiring her. She has done a tremendous job in, in creating buzz and excitement throughout this region for downtown Oxford and bringing people to downtown. It has enhanced the city's reputation and standing throughout the community, and, you know, we pledge to try to continue doing that. I'll add one other note in regards to the public art. If it meets with this board's approval ultimately next Tuesday, and the county will hopefully agree to allowing some of the locations, and Mike and I have talked about that, too, we actually talked in Wilmington about some of it, um, we would, we're, our goal is to get it in place before hot sauce, so that, um, you know, all of our visitors can, can see that, too, when they come. So I just wanted to, to add that in addition to, you know, my thanks to Mary. Mary knows how I feel, and, uh, we're gonna miss her. Team Oxford's gonna have a big, big hole and big shoes to fill with her departure, but I understand it, you know, family comes first, and, uh, we've got big shoes to fill, and she's got a big challenge where I grew up. She's going to where I grew up, so I know all those people there, and, uh, they're getting a good one. Newton's gain is our loss, and, you know, I'll leave it at that. So again, Mary, thank you so much for your time that you spent here in Oxford and, uh, doing all the things that you've done. We're gonna miss you.
There you go. Thank you. I would say let's give him a round of applause. It's not quite the same as a going away party, but...
David, I appreciate it.
We appreciate you. And so with that, um, we did have, I think we've, we've gone through our comments, so there was a request to go into closed session, so can...
Motion.
Motion by Commissioner Kern to go into closed session, any further discussion on that? All in favor of going into closed session, signal so by saying aye.
Uh-huh.
Any opposed, like sign? Okay. Thank you all for coming out tonight, be safe and sound on your way home, and Ms. Bowen, you are free to go.
Thank you, Susan Social.
Okay, excellent. Thank you.